Good evening. City Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation by Councilmember Butler Barlow, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. As we begin our meeting tonight, I would like for all of us to be thoughtful of the business that we have to do for the city. And in honor of the Peanut Fest weekend, I'd like to give you two quotes from American agricultural scientist and peanut researcher George Washington Carver. The two quotes are: "How far you go in life depends on your being tender with the young, compassionate with the aged, sympathetic with the striving, and tolerant of the weak and of the strong, because someday in your life you will have been all of these." And the second quote is this: "No individual has any right to come into the world and go out of it without leaving behind a distinct and legitimate reason for having passed through it." Thank you.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Madam Clerk, please present the resolution for consideration.
A resolution certifying the closed meeting of October 4th, 2023 pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712. The code of Virginia is presented at this time. Now therefore, be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Suffolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia law, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of the City of Suffolk in the closed meeting.
Council motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve, Mayor.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Williams?
Second, Ed, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We're now move to approval of the minutes from the April 19th, 2023, and May 3rd, 2023, work sessions and regular meetings. And a motion would be in order. Council, Councilman Williams?
Move to approve.
Motion for approval from Councilman Williams. Councilman Johnson?
Second.
And a second from Councilman Johnson. Any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We do have two special presentations this evening. Our first is a proclamation in recognition of Cybersecurity Awareness Month, which will be followed by a proclamation in recognition of Fire Prevention Week. Mr. Manager, please present an overview.
Uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, as the mayor has said, our first proclamation is recognition of Cybersecurity Awareness Month, which extends during the month of October and is deserved throughout the Commonwealth and across the nation. With us this evening to accept the proclamation and provide some remarks is Suffolk's Director of Information Technology, Dr. Charles Karyaku.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the proclamation?
Whereas in 2004, the President of the United States and the Congress declared October to be Cybersecurity Awareness Month in order to help individuals protect themselves online as threats to technology and confidential data became more commonplace. And whereas cybersecurity, the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency and the National Cybersecurity Alliance lead a collaborative effort between government and industry to raise cybersecurity awareness nationally and internationally. And whereas 2023 marks the 20th Annual Cybersecurity Awareness Month, and this year, the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency is launching a new awareness program that will encourage four simple steps every American can take to stay safe online. Now therefore, I, Michael D. Dooman, the Mayor of the City of Suffolk, Virginia, do hereby proclaim that October 1st, 2023 through October 31st, 2023, as Cybersecurity Awareness Month, and encourage all residents to educate themselves on the fundamentals of cybersecurity in order to keep themselves and their online data safe and secure. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Suffolk to be affixed this fourth day of October in the year of our Lord 2023.
Thank you, Mayor. And I won't have any comments, but we have a brief video from the Director of CISA.
Hey, everybody. I'm Jen Easterly, Director of CISA, America's Cyber Defense Agency. And I want to be the first to wish you a happy Cybersecurity Awareness Month. I'm thrilled to get to share with you a little about this year's campaign through this video. This October, we challenge all Americans to help secure our world by adapting four simple steps that everyone can take to stay safe online. First, use strong passwords, meaning long, random, and unique, to each account, and use a password manager to generate them and to save them. Two, one of my personal favorites, enable multi-factor authentication on all accounts that offer it. You need more than a password on your most important accounts like email, social media, and financial accounts. So enable MFA. Three, recognize and report phishing, as we like to say, think before you click. Be cautious of unsolicited emails or texts or calls asking you for personal information, and don't click on links or open attachments from unknown sources. Finally, number four, update your software. In fact, enable automatic updates on your software so the latest security patches just keep your devices continuously up to date. We all have a role to play to secure our world. We can all secure our online accounts by practicing basic cyber hygiene, including the four steps I just mentioned. And let's secure our families by ensuring that our loved ones know what to look for and how to stay safe online. Companies also have a role to play to secure our digital world. CISA is asking tech companies and software developers to secure our businesses and our individual customers by ensuring that their products are secure by design. That way, technology is secure right out of the box, and Americans are better protected. We invite families, small and medium businesses, tech providers, government, and international partners, and others to join the campaign and participate in Cybersecurity Awareness Month 2023. Learn more by visiting cisa.gov.
So, uh, thank you, Mayor, and thank you for promoting this. And sorry about the video, but thank you very much.
Mr. Manager, will you please present an overview of our next proclamation?
Hopefully, we won't have to dub this one. Our second proclamation is recognition of Fire Prevention Week, which established to commemorate the great Chicago Fire of 1871, which started on October 8th and extended through October 9th of that year. Fire Prevention Week is deserved annually from Sunday through Saturday during the week of October 9th. This year's theme is Cooking Safely Starts With You. With us this evening to accept the proclamation and provide some remarks is Suffolk's Fire Chief, Michael Baraki, Fire Marshal, Chris Cornwell, and the rest of the department.
Madam Clerk, will you please present the proclamation?
Whereas the City of Suffolk is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all of our residents and visitors, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and people are at greatest risk from fire in their homes, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying by half in those home fires that are reported. And whereas our Suffolk First Responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and related injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas the 2023 Fire Prevention Week theme, Cooking Safely Starts With You, Pay Attention to Fire Prevention, efficiently, effectively reminds us that it is important to have and practice a home fire escape plan. Now therefore, I, Michael D. Dooman, the Mayor of City Suffolk, Virginia, do hereby proclaim October the 8th, 2023 through October the 14th, 2023, as Fire Prevention Week, and encourage all residents to create their escape plans, practice their plan frequently, and to participate in the many public safety activities sponsored by the Suffolk Fire Marshal's Office. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Suffolk to be affixed this fourth day of October in the year of our Lord 2023.
Mayor, can we, uh?
Excuse me, we're gonna get a quick picture with James.
Mayor, do you mind, uh, standing right here?
No, my pleasure.
James, Jennifer, thank you for that. Uh, Mayor Dooman, thank you for this proclamation. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, it is my honor to accept this proclamation on behalf of the men and women of Suffolk Fire Rescue. Joining me at the podium are the members of the Fire Marshal's Office. Fire Marshal, Chris Cornwell, Deputy Fire Marshal Kyle Hale, leads this office of dedicated fire investigators, fire inspectors, educators, and plans, fire plans reviewers. Their job is defined by the three Es: education, engineering, and enforcement. Today is a great opportunity to educate our citizens on the dangers and hazards associated with cooking fires. As this year's theme, as we just heard, a Fire Prevention Week is Cooking Safely Starts With You, Pay Attention to Fire Prevention. Why is this so relevant to our citizens? Since 2022, 604 calls for service in the city are related to cooking incidents. These calls for service range from just smoking to the structure, from cooking, all the way to building fires and structure fires that occur because of stove, the oven, or other appliances in the kitchen. Just yesterday, two of our residents were displaced after a kitchen fire. I ask that our citizens pay attention while cooking, don't get distracted in the kitchen, and have working smoke detectors that will alarm and alert our residents early into the smoke production so that they can get out safely. Chief Cornwell will now take the podium and provide information regarding our smoke detector program for our citizens.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening again, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and honorable City Council members. Um, I'd be remiss tonight if I didn't expand upon a little bit regarding the incident Chief spoke of just yesterday, uh, just right up the street here in our very own city regarding the kitchen fire. Um, you see, because those citizens, as tragic, as tragic as that incident was, it could have been so much worse. Um, as we interviewed those citizens, they were able to share with us how they were alerted of the fire in their kitchen just a few rooms away by their smoke detectors. So, it's proved to us that they work. And as simple as they are, as inexpensive as they are, they save lives. It's a proven fact again and again and again that they work. And there's no reason why every citizen in this city shouldn't have one. We have them, we're ready to install them. We just encourage and urge every citizen to give us a call, 757-514-4540. We'll be glad to arrange not only the smoke detector for you, but the installation of it for you in your home. Um, we'd be glad to make that happen. That's part of what we do. One last thing before I leave the podium, because I don't get this opportunity often. It is an honor and a privilege for me to stand here with this group of men and women. Um, I didn't tell them I was gonna do this, but it is just that. Um, I'm proud of everything that they do each and every day for not only Suffolk Fire and Rescue, but for our city's Fire Marshal's Office. We're lacking two tonight, my office assistant and our city's Fire Protection Plans Reviewer, but I do want them to know that I appreciate each and everything they do for us. 365 days a year, not just Fire Prevention Week, okay? They eat, sleep, and breathe this stuff so that our citizens can be safe each and every day. And I want to thank them. Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
from the consent agenda and adoption of the entire agenda as presented. Removal of any item from the consent agenda would only be necessary if any member of City Council wishes to vote on a specific item separately, and a motion would be required. A motion would be in order at this time. What is the pleasure of council? Councilman Johnson?
Move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Got a motion for approval. Councilman Johnson, do I have a second? Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Butler Barlow. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We're now move to agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, are there any agenda speakers at this time? And if so, please explain the guidelines.
There are no agenda speakers.
Hearing no agenda speakers, will you please present the consent agenda for consideration?
Item number seven, in ordinance to accept and appropriate community flood preparedness funds from the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation, and transfer funding from the Stormwater Fund for the Finney Outfall to the Nanswin River Drainage Area Study. Item number eight, in ordinance to accept and appropriate a Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Education School Construction Assistance Program grant to the school's operating fund and to transfer the funding to the Capital Projects Fund in support of the John F. Kennedy Middle School Replacement Project. Item number nine, in ordinance to transfer funds from the Human Resources Building Renovations School's Administration Building Project to the John F. Kennedy Middle School Replacement Project. Item number 10, in ordinance to authorize the transfer of unspent funds from the OBC Healthcare Foundation COVID Response Grant to the Suffolk Department of Social Services. Item number 11, in ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Suffolk Parks and Trails Alliance for the Suffolk Department of Parks and Recreation to enhance the Festival of Lights event. Item number 12, in ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority in support of the City of Suffolk's opioid prevention and treatment program. And item number 13, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a change order to an agreement with Motorola Solutions Incorporated for the upgrade of radio transmitter sites.
Mr. Manager, will you please provide an overview of the items?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Item seven, the city has received $65,593 in community flood preparedness funds from the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation. The funds will be used for a study of the Finney Outfall to Nanswin River Drainage Area. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the consolidated grants fund budget by the $65,593. The ordinance also transfers matching funds in the amount of $7,288, which is available within the Stormwater Fund. In regards to item eight, the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Education has awarded the Suffolk Public Schools a Schools Construction Assistance Program grant in the amount of $15,130,400 in support of the John F. Kennedy Middle School Replacement Project. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the school's operating fund and transfer the funds to the capital projects fund budgets by the $15,130,400. No local match is required. In regards to number nine, is an ordinance to transfer available funding in the amount of $5,388, I mean, 300, $5,388,167, from the Human Resources Building Renovations to the school's administration project to the, to the John F. Kennedy Middle School Replacement Project. The funds will assist with the estimated total funding of the $75,018,567, which includes architectural engineering services, construction administration services, construction and furniture fixtures and equipment of the school. Adoption of the ordinance is necessary to authorize the transfer of the capital funds. In regards to item 10, it's an ordinance to authorize the transfer of unspent funds in the amount of $28,029.40 from the OBC Healthcare Foundation COVID Response Grant to the General Operating Fund of the Department of Social Services. The unspent funds are from a previous OBC COVID Response Grant, which expired in 2021, and the OBC Foundation has approved the remaining funds to be transferred to the Department of Social Services. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the general fund budget by $28,029.40 and decrease the consolidated grants fund budget by the same amount. In regards to item 11, the city has received $1,800 from Parks and Trails Alliance. The funds will be used to enhance the Festival of Lights event that is held by the Department of Parks and Recreation. Um, adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the general fund operating budget by $1,800. There's no local match. In regards to item 12, the city has received funds in the amount of $135,228 from the Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority in support of the City of Suffolk's opioid prevention and treatment program. The funding will be used for the needs assessment related to opioid abuse and gaps in the prevention and treatment. It will also assist in the purchase of grant tracking software to monitor and track funding. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the consolidated grants fund budget by the $135,228. A local match in the amount of $45,076 is required, which is available in the consolidated grants fund. In regards to item 13, it's for City Council's consideration as a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a change order to the existing agreement with Motorola Solutions for the upgrade to the downtown and Wellyville communication transmitter sites. Improvements under this change order will ensure consistent, reliable, and redundant communications at the tower sites. Funding for this change order was approved in June 2023 through the transfer of existing capital funds. Thank you.
Counsel, if there are no questions about the items, a motion would be in order to approve the consent agenda as presented. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve, Mayor.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Williams?
I second it, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We do have one public hearing this evening to consider a resolution adopting the 2024 Legislative Agenda for the City of Suffolk. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yeah, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, at your September 20th regular meeting, you received an overview of the city's 2024 draft legislative agenda. The draft agenda is a comprehensive package of priorities that includes a wide range of items that are important to the city. The expectation is not that we would achieve success on every individual priority listed. This approach, however, will give staff and our lobbyists a strong foundation from which to advocate on behalf of the city at the regional, state, and federal levels. As there are opportunities that may arise during the upcoming session, the city will be well-prepared to address these important items. It is also important to recognize that a number of factors are in play that will impact representation of the city at the state level, including redistricting, retirements, incumbents running for a different office. As a result of redistricting, a number of the General Assembly members representing the City of Suffolk will be cut in half, going from six to three, with just one member of the Senate and two members of the House delegates. While I'm confident in the city's legislative liaison's Access Point Public Affairs work, I want us to keep that in mind as we pursue the priorities in our agenda. There has been also two additional items added to the draft agenda: farmland preservation programs and forestry sustainability fund. This was added subsequent to your 20th meeting. Access Point Public Affairs is here to provide a brief overview of the agenda prior to tonight's public hearing. And at this time, I will ask Mindy Carlin and Emily Reynolds to provide the overview.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Mindy Carlin with Access Point Public Affairs. Just to expand on a couple of the items that, that Mr. Moore shared, Suffolk's not alone embracing for significant change following the November elections. In fact, retirements and primary losses will lead to, have, will be leading to a significant loss of experience and institutional knowledge statewide that will impact our efforts on behalf of the city. Thirty-three House members and 15 Senate members will not be returning to the General Assembly in January. That is unprecedented and will be impactful. We also have a lot of open seats where there is no incumbent running for office. Thirty-three in the House of the 100 seats, and 11 open seats in the Senate. Uh, so we're going to have to get familiar with a lot of new faces who've never served at the state level. Another factor that will impact our work at the state level is uncertainty with respect to the leadership of the House and the Senate. In January of this year, Democrats had control of the Senate with a margin of 21 to 19, and Republicans had control of the House, 52 Republicans and 48 Democrats. The party in control of each body has significant power with respect to setting the rules and naming committee leadership, among other things, of course. So with such close margins and such significant change in the members that will be serving, leadership of both bodies is really in question. And so while some work can and will be done to advance the city's priorities and to prepare for the legislative session prior to the elections, it's going to be difficult to really secure patrons, have legislation drafted, we're going to be behind the eight ball. But we won't be alone. Everyone will be in the same situation. Even after the elections, we're not likely to know who will serve on which committees, or who will be leading the committees until they actually convene in January. So, we just wanted to kind of ensure, I know we all know that big change is coming with the elections in November, but wanted to make sure that there is kind of a, an understanding of how that will impact the work that we do on behalf of the city. Um, so with that, Emily is gonna go through just very briefly the slides, and then we'll answer questions.
Thanks so much. With that change, there's a lot of good opportunities, so we'll be positive, but you'll be represented well as we move into the General Assembly session after these elections. So, um, as you will recall from the last council meeting, so we feel very fortunate we're with you in two meetings consecutively. And we presented the proposed legislative priorities in way more detail, so I'm gonna fly through these just for procedural purposes. And then I'm gonna highlight the two that were proposed in addition. So for public safety, as you'll recall, staff recommended reducing the role of law enforcement officials in responding to mental health situations, increase support for mental health and wellness services for public safety officials, restore authority for law enforcement to conduct public safety stops, protect the ability to utilize important technology solutions as part of the city's public safety efforts, extend the time period of execution of search warrants, enhance retirement benefits for E91 operators, increase continuing education requirements for animal control officers, protect current fees and commission structures for regional correctional facilities, and then finally, provide funding to support a juvenile detention facility for the Fifth Judicial District. Moving along to transportation, that first priority is the Hazelwood Bridge and Godwin Bridge expansions. Again, as a reminder, staff recommendation is that the city seeks funding to help cover the estimated cost of this expansion. It's $120 million for each bridge with a total of $240 million. Next, we have Route 460. Again, the city's currently seeking $30.1 million to fund the first phase of this project to begin the right-of-way acquisition, as well as the relocation of utilities. Route 58, staff recommends seeking $1.95 million for a feasibility study to evaluate the various options for this important corridor so that a plan forward can be developed. Um, next slide is the, or excuse me, the next item is the rail safety grade separation. Um, the city has prioritized five of the Commonwealth rail line crossings where the impact on major road corridors is most significant, recommends seeking $895,000 to develop alternatives to separate the rail line from these crossings. Um, next is the Amtrak Passenger Train Station. Staff recommends seeking $250,000 to conduct a feasibility and sighting study to explore this project. King's Highway Bridge, to advance this project, staff recommends seeking $11 million to conduct a preliminary engineering, but the estimated total cost for this project would be $170 million. Finally, this item is the transportation funding formula reform. Um, the City of Suffolk is concerned that Virginia's current transportation funding formulas, including Smart Scale, do not adequately consider the importance of evacuation routes and freight traffic into this. So to enable a more appropriate distribution of state transportation dollars, we, the staff recommends supporting reform of Smart Scale, other transportation funding formulas to increase the, increase the weight of these two important factors. I'm gonna breeze through these next ones. Finance regulations. Um, you'll see on the screen here, I know I'm reading to you, but just to ensure that we're all on the same page. Protect existing local tax authority. Protect and expand the historic preservation tax credit. Oppose unfunded mandates and underfunded mandates. Protect qualified and sovereign immunity. Next is community development, where you'll see increased several penalties for repeat zoning violations. Protect funding for maintenance of his- zoning violations, protect funding for maintenance of historic African-American cemeteries, implement reforms to eminent domain, and protect right-of-way authority as well as protect local land use authority. Again, these were two new categories that we had in the priorities in the proposed package. Human services, the first one is Enable Child Services Act, funding to be used for non-traditional foster-child placements as well as supervision, and then adjust qualification requirements for individuals working in the city's family services occupational group. The next one is the education and workforce development. Again, staff recommends securing funding to support development of the Workforce Trades and Innovation Center. $600,000 for site development and rehab of the existing structure would be the recommendation of staff seeking that funding. Next is provide state funding to support school construction and modernization, and then finally, protect local government authority regarding unspent local education funding. So finally, we have the environmental and utilities. Again, going through these, maintain existing water-related fees, increase funding for lead service line mandates, protect stormwater fees, increase funding for Godwin's Mill Pond Dam improvements, advance efforts to address waterworks, treatment staffing challenges, and finally, for the ones that we've already gone through, is identify funding for electric charging stations. So as we discussed, the two new ones is, first, staff recommends supporting state funding and the promotion of farmland preservation programs that allow, at a local option, compensation to owners of such land. Compensation programs would include state and/or localities, purchases of development rights, transfer of development rights, leasing of development rights, holding or co-holding of perpetual conservation easement, tax credits, or other similar concepts. The final item is increase funding for the Forest Sustainability Fund. This is a tool for localities to help encourage maintaining forested land. So those were the two new items that we definitely wanted to cover for you all in the proposed agenda. Finally, as you saw this the last presentation, in addition to those priorities that we have already described, these are going to be the following recommended organizations that we would be supportive of their legislative programs, and I won't read them, but there they are on the screen that we'll be linking up with. Before closing, I do want to remind council that on December 20th, 2023 of this year, the governor will be releasing his proposed budget, which will be considered by the General Assembly as we go into the next General Assembly session in January. This is the latest date Virginia law allows for the governor to share his proposed spending plan, and so this will impact the city's efforts to advance the budget priorities should they be approved this evening. So anyway, with that, we'll answer any questions and appreciate your time this evening.
Okay, thank you very much for your presentation. We'll go ahead and continue with the public hearing, and if you would, just make yourselves available after the hearing.
Sure.
Madam Clerk, before we open the public hearing, please explain the guidelines.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address, and we'll have three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing, where the first speaker comes forward and provides their name and address. Is there anyone present who would like to speak? Mr. Ryan?
Good evening. Thomas Ryan, 119 Suffolk Minutes Boulevard, Suffolk, Virginia. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, City Manager. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Suffolk Humane Society in support of the following 2024 legislative priority: increase support for mental health and wellness services for public safety officials. In recognition of the fact that public safety officials are operating in increasingly complex and challenging environments, the city supports efforts to improve the delivery of and access to mental health and wellness services for public safety officials. Recently, the Board of the Suffolk Humane Society discussed ways in which they could expand the value of the organization to residents of Suffolk in 2024. Many potential initiatives were discussed, but the one that was most embraced was to seek opportunities within the city to expand the use of therapy animals, particularly with first responders and other high-stress public safety teams. A small team met last month to discuss how we might move forward on these opportunities, and we agreed that we needed to reach out to the City of Suffolk and request the meeting to determine the level of interest on your side. And I think that this legislative agenda item speaks directly to that, that's why I'm here tonight. At the last city council meeting, the noted agenda item was presented, and we felt it offered us a great opportunity to come forward this evening and ask the city to consider to meet with representatives of the Suffolk Humane Society before the end of the year to do just that. As you know, therapy dogs and other animals are used every day with great success to help those with high-stress jobs and individuals suffering from PTSD to live a healthier and more fulfilling life. I hope you will accept our invitation to sit down and discuss this great opportunity in the coming weeks. We will follow up with the city manager via email. In the meantime, if you have any questions, you can contact Kerry Schalcross, the Executive Director of the Suffolk Humane Society, or myself at your convenience. Thank you for your time and interest, and have a great evening.
Thank you, sir. We have our next speaker, please. Do we have anyone else present who would like to speak to this resolution? Hearing no other speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Counsel, a resolution has been presented for consideration. Questions, comments, or a motion? Councilman Fawcett?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate them coming out and giving us another overview tonight. We've been through this a few times, so we pretty much know where the agenda's going. So at this time, I'd like to go ahead and ask for approval.
Do we have a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett? Councilman Williams?
I second that, Mayor.
We have a second from Councilman Williams. Any other questions or comments? Councilman Rector?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you don't mind, can one of y'all come back up to the podium? I just got a quick question for you. I know that some of these initiatives that we have, you know, sort of continuation from one year to the next, with the anticipated upheaval in who's going to be where with the next legislative sessions, are there some items that, you know, you're kind of afraid that might have to go back to square one and kind of pick up a sponsor and get the momentum going again, you know, particularly some of the construction projects that we're trying to get funding for?
Thank you, Councilman Rector, Mr. Mayor, Mindy Carlin. I think part of the reason why we are proposing such a broad agenda is to give us the flexibility to adapt to the change that's coming and to be able to identify members who we think would be effective in carrying the banner for a range of our priorities. We have a number of new priorities that have heavy price tags associated with them. For example, the Juvenile Detention Center is new, the Workforce Training Innovation Center is new. I think we will definitely feel the change in the members of our delegation. As you're aware, we currently have two of our delegates who are vying for an open Senate seat. One has been a budget conferee. Regardless of what happens in that election, we will no longer have a budget conferee that hails from the City of Suffolk. So I think we are optimistic in our relationships with legislators outside of the Suffolk area who could be strong leaders in carrying forward the city's agenda items where they align with those legislator interests.
Thank you very much for that.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll just be very brief. Number one, thank you very much for your representation. I know there is going to be a lot going on here shortly, and it really does make it impossible to try to develop some type of strategy when you don't know who you're going to deal with. And fortunately, unfortunately, a lot of it is personalities, personalities and their priorities and how the priorities of the legislators align with our priorities and the ones where we can find that, and yet we have such a diversified list of requests, but we've actually hit, you know, every significant area there is of government. We've got, you know, I'm very impressed with our ask list, if you will. It's all relevant, it's all impactful, it'll all have an immediate effect on our citizens, especially when it comes to public safety, and a lot of it directly or indirectly is fiscally related as well. So, you know, I think we're positioned very well to have some success with what we're proposing. I appreciate everybody on council, really, is very non-controversial. Everyone, you know, the consensus was there for what we were, what we all thought would work for our citizens, and that's a good thing, too. Mr. Ryan, great suggestion on the therapy dogs, as being a past member and president of Suffolk Humane, and having two therapy dogs, I agree with you. So, you know, see if we get a little bit of help up here, we'll try to make something happen. With that being said, we do have a rest. Thank you very much. Once again, we do have a resolution for consideration. Counsel, what is your pleasure? Oh, that's right, we already have a, got, okay, so we had Council, see if I can get this right, we got Councilman Fawcett with a motion for approval, Councilman Williams for the motion with a second. Let's see, wasn't that bad, I remember? And I'll ask one more time, is there any discussion in the motion since I got off track here? Okay, hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, we have no ordinances this evening, no resolutions, and no staff reports. We do have a motion to schedule a city council work session for Wednesday, October 18th, 2023, at 4:00 p.m., unless canceled, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Williams?
Move to approve.
Motion for approval from Councilman Williams. Do I have a second? Councilman Rector?
Second.
Second from Councilman Rector. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We will now move to non-agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, do we have any non-agenda speakers, and if so, please explain the guidelines.
We do have two non-agenda speakers registered this evening. Each person participating in the item of business entitled "Non-Agenda Speakers Shall Limit Their Remarks to the Services, Policies, and Affairs of City Government" and shall be permitted five minutes to the purpose of presenting his or her matter. Speakers appearing before city council will not be permitted to participate in the following activities: to campaign for public office, engage in personal attacks, promote private business ventures, or use profanity. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order by the presiding officer and will immediately yield the floor and be seated. Our first speaker is Valia Rose. Ms. Rose has asked that I not provide her address publicly. She is representing herself, and her topic is the Preserve at Lake Mead. Is Ms. Rose present? Our next speaker is Daniel Blue, 168 Preserve Way, representing self regarding cluster development.
Yes, good evening. My name's Daniel Blue. I am a lifelong, I live at 168 Preserve Way in Lake Mead, Suffolk, Virginia, 23434. I am a lifelong resident of Hampton Roads. I've spent most of my life in Norfolk, most of my adult life in Chesapeake. I moved to Suffolk because I thought I would enjoy an even better life, the rest of my life here. However, I am disappointed in where I live, and I've come here for some help from you. I live adjacent to a 6.2-acre lot that is a mess. It looks like something along the dismal swamp canal. Every time I call, and I've called almost every office at the city council, I've been met with, well, this is kind of how things go during development. I have construction debris, I have weeds adjacent to my yard, which are literally, I measured today, 42 inches tall, 6.2 acres of this. So you can only imagine what lives in there. The developer has cut this three times since I lived there. I've lived there 18 months, or since May of 2022. My house cost almost three times, from what I've read in the records of Suffolk, the average cost of a home in Suffolk. And I just feel like I don't have any reason to live like that. I would like to implore any of you to suggest to me how to resolve this. That's all I have. I'm tired of living like that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
That concludes the speakers, Mayor.
Okay, we'll now move to new business. Madam Clerk, are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
The following items that are additions for this evening's agenda. A motion to nominate and appoint the following members of city council to their respective bodies. The Virginia Municipal League Annual Conference Urban Section Meeting, the voting delegate would be Vice Mayor Lou Ward, and the alternate voting delegate would be Councilmember Leotis Williams. And the Virginia Municipal League Annual Conference Business Meeting, the voting delegate would be Councilmember John Rector.
Counsel, motion been presented. Councilman Johnson?
Move for approval.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Johnson, Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Butler Barlow. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Council members, is there any other new business items that require the action of city council for consideration? Hearing none, we'll move to announcements and comments, and at this time, I'll ask Media and Community Relations Director Jennifer Moore, if she has any announcements.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager. I'll start the announcements off tonight with a reminder that the City of Suffolk will observe the Columbus Day and Yorktown Victory Day holiday on Monday, October 9th, and city offices will be closed. Normal operations will resume on Tuesday, October 10th, at 8:30 a.m. There is no interruption to trash and recycling collection, and Suffolk Transit will operate on a normal schedule. An exciting news from our finance department, as they have announced that all three credit, excuse me, all three rating agencies, Mitch, Fitch, Moody's, and S&amp;P, have affirmed the city's AAA rating with a stable outlook. The AAA represents the creditworthiness of the city's issued bonds. It also provides assurances that the City of Suffolk has the highest quality of bonds with the least amount of risk, and that both the principal and interest on the bonds will be paid on time and in full. And it doesn't stop there. The Finance Department has also been awarded a Distinguished Budget Presentation Award by the Government Finance Officer Association for the 16th straight year for its 2023 through '24 fiscal year operating and capital budget. The award reflects the commitment of the governing body and staff to meeting the highest principles of governmental budgeting. And a reminder that Suffolk Festivals is pleased to announce the return of the 45th Annual Suffolk Peanuts Festival, which starts tomorrow. In addition to the traditional festivities, special features will include the world's only peanut butter sculpting competition, the Suffolk Rotin Shrimp Feast, and fireworks. Merchants, vendors, crafters will offer their wares and concessions, including beer and wine, throughout the event site. And don't forget to check out the Tunnels to Towers Foundation's 9/11 Never Forget Memorial Exhibit. Tickets are available online for purchase, and for ticket prices and a complete list of activities, visit sufficpeanutfest.com. And while you're at the Peanut Fest, don't forget to swing by and chat with the chief on Sunday, October 8th, from noon to 2:00 p.m. to meet and greet with Interim Police Chief Danny Bowie. He'll be on hand to chat about a variety of public safety topics that impact your community. For more information, visit sufficva.us. And there's a new grocery store in town, and they're hiring. The Suffolk Workforce Development Department would like to share this hiring event for the new Publix at Planter Station located on Center Brook Lane. The hiring event is on October 6th through 8th, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and for more information, visit apply公普里 jobs. Suffolk Parks and Rec would like you to get ready for a spooktacular carpool cinema. This free movie event will feature the 1984 classic Ghostbusters on Saturday, October 14th, at Bennett's Creek Park. Gates open at 5:00 p.m. with a guest appearance from the Ghostbusters of Virginia, and the movie starts at 7:00 p.m. So cozy up in your car or bring a blanket or chair to watch. For more information, visit sufficva.us. And if you're haunted by litter, or if you need another reason to wear your Halloween And if you're haunted by litter, or if you need another reason to wear your Halloween costume, then Keep Suffolk Beautiful's Halloween Cleanup is for you. The event will take place on Saturday, October 21st, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Volunteers are encouraged to dress to impress, with prizes available for most eco-friendly and most original Halloween costumes. Participants will meet outside the Nanspin Brewing Station, and to sign up to receive equipment, such as litter grabbers and vests, visit SuffolkVA.us. And the Suffolk Economic Development Department invites you to attend their Fall Fest on Sunday, October 29th, from 6, from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. in downtown Suffolk. Come out for trick-or-treating, games, petting zoo, and more family fun. For more information, visit DowntownSuffolk.com. And Suffolk Parks and Rec is hosting a similarly spooky year event with candy, games, face painting, and even a haunted house on Saturday, October 28th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at all three of their rec center locations: East Suffolk, Curtis Miltier, and the Creekside Rec Center. For more information, visit SuffolkVA.us. And of course, on your screen are the various ways that residents can stay connected to City of Suffolk happenings. Thanks and have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. We now move on to announcements from City Council. Councilman Rector? Let me get you on it. Gotcha.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I'd like to start by thanking Detective Coziana and Sergeant Worth, who came to our last Civic League meeting. Detective Coziana presented the SEPTED program about basically how you can take a look at your environment, your house, and everything else, and try to identify areas of potential vulnerability to your personal safety. It was very well received, and was a lot of good information, and thank you very much for that. I attended the senior expo that was held at the Westminster Presbyterian Church on Godwin Boulevard. I believe that the Sheriff's Office put that on. It was an amazing event, and I believe Councilmember Barlow, you were there with me because you were going to do the prayer, and Roger. There was a lot of great information that was offered to our senior population, and since I'm just about there, I did avail myself of some of the information and some of the, you know, tools and equipment that they've got to help you keep track with your medications. I'm sorry that I have to keep track of my medications, but it is what it is. And then I left that and went to the Regional School Partnership Luncheon that was held at the Workforce Development Center at Polycamp Community College. And it was great to be there to see how the local school systems are partnering, not only with the local employers, but also with the community colleges, to help prepare the young men and women who are leaving high school to be prepared for the, to be prepared to enter the workforce. And then bounced from that, went to the Suffolk First Citizen Dinner that was held at the Suffolk Center for the Cultural Arts, and that was a very nice event, obviously, and Mack and Sandra Bertzong were two very well-deserved recipients of that honor, and it was a great evening. And then, let's see, the City Manager and the Vice Mayor and I attended the opioid crisis update that was held right here in these chambers that was conducted by the Western Tidewater Community Services Board. I know we received some money in on one of the consent agenda items to deal with opioid. It was interesting and fascinating and sometimes, and at times depressing, to listen to all the ways that the opioid crisis has affected members of our community. And a lot of the myths that we may have had, or I may have had, about who the crisis affects got put to rest, because it can affect virtually anybody from any walk of life at any time. And so not only did we learn that the causes of the opioid crisis are many, how we go about treating it effectively, there are almost as many ways that that cat's going to have to be skinned, too. So for the state and the city to receive monies to help with that, combat that, is going to be a much, much welcomed help. And then I went to Williamsburg to the RVA 757 Convergence Conference that was held at the Williamsburg Lodge. And if we'll remember, y'all will remember, the president of that group, John Martin, came and did a little presentation at one of our work sessions. There's a lot of people involved in that. It's going to be a great initiative once they get it up and running. And in short, it's a collaborative effort to try to pull Richmond and the Tidewater region together to incorporate us into kind of one geographic region to help us attract businesses and industries and whatnot, and particularly ones that might be predicated on a population basis. And since we did a proclamation tonight for cybersecurity, one of the presenters at that conference was a cybersecurity expert, and he gave his staff the list of companies that were doing the sponsorships, and it was everybody from Centerra to Town Bank to all kinds of companies that most of us know very well, and gave them 30 minutes, just 30 minutes, to go and review every company that was on that list. And when they finished, 91% of the companies that were on that list had easily accessible cyber vulnerabilities. So I thought that was very, very eye-opening, so it just bears to light how important cybersecurity is. Then last Saturday, I had the opportunity for the first time to ride in the Peanut Fest Parade. And the only takeaway that I have from riding in the Peanut Fest Parade is, do not get behind the Vice Mayor. He was in one souped-up, what do you call that thing, a slingshot automobile? There were more people taking pictures of that thing. I don't think anybody even knew I was in the parade riding behind him, which is just as, just as well. And then I'm sure Councilman Johnson's going to talk a lot more about this, but I did want to bring up one item from it, the Suffolk Lion Club 100th Anniversary Dinner. I believe, once again, the Vice Mayor was there. Tim, you were the keynote, you were the head of Hot Show at that thing. But I know you're going to talk about it some more, but the keynote presenter there, and Mayor, obviously, you were there, too. Dr. Wyler gave one of the best talks that I have ever heard in an event like that. He was, he was fascinating, he was on point. He had some great things to say about leadership, developing leadership, and the importance of developing leadership within a, within a community. So if nothing else, it was just a genuine treat to get to listen to him. And my other takeaway from that evening was that we learned that the mayor's father-in-law was a longtime member of the Quanis Club and not the Lions Club.
Had to bring that up, didn't you?
I had to. And then yesterday, I attended along, I guess, with Deputy City Manager Aziz, and the Vice Mayor was there, and the Mayor was there, the state of the region. And it was a fascinating presentation by some very knowledgeable people from the ODU Economics Department. The bottom line is, is that, and it's something that we all know and are all very familiar with about this region, we tend to be much more stable than a lot of the peer groups that we get compared to, and it has mostly to do with, obviously, with all the military spending and the government spending that happens in this region. The state of Virginia is by far and away the largest recipient of federal dollars of just about any state in the country. So while we're kind of the steady Eddie, we're not growing and doing things as fast as some of the other areas in the country, but in many, many more ways than one, our region, and particularly the City of Suffolk as a whole, are holding our own and exceeding expectations. And it's kind of like, you know, the world was kind of divided between what happened before the Great Recession of 2008, and then, you know, the next great event was COVID. So it was kind of interesting to see how well this area is recovering from COVID, and we're, we're just about there. There's still some issues that we're fighting, but the recovery from the COVID strikes against employment and everything else are just about, about to come back. And one of the things that we learned is that, you know, we all know that the port of Virginia is having a big impact on what goes on in this entire region, and that was borne out again by the fact that manufacturing, warehousing, distribution, and logistics is projected to be the fastest, one of the fastest-growing areas of employment for this region. And that was also backed up when I was at the RVA 757 conference, because they put a graph up of the four largest job generators that they predict for tomorrow, and number one was logistics, distribution, supply chain, and port support. And then finally, well, not, not finally, this may or may not be my last council meeting. On Friday, I have accepted an invitation from Suffolk Skydiving at their Media Day to extricate and jump out of a perfectly good airplane. Hopefully, they're going to put me with somebody that does not have a death wish or suicide thoughts, but hopefully, you know, my takeoffs will equal my landings successfully, and I'm not a stain on the pavement somewhere. And then I hope everybody has a good time at Peanut Fest. It's always a great, great event, and hopefully, the weather's going to be good. There's a lot of things to do out there. Bring your family out there and take advantage of all that they have to offer. And then lastly, I want to extend my condolences to the family of Jack Nerny. His list of accomplishments and contributions to the city, including being named Suffolk First Citizen in 1997, is long and includes organizations all across the spectrum. And, and in fact, he is in no small way responsible for the fact that I'm sitting up here this evening, because when I first got asked to serve on the Planning Commission by then-Councilman Thomas Woodward, my first call was to Jack Nerny. And he said, yes, by all means. He said, you should accept the invitation to join the Planning Commission. So one thing led to another, and here I am, and with that, I'll say good night.
Councilman Williams?
Sorry about that.
It's all right.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. First, I would like to offer my condolences to the late Mr. Ricky Barnes. I just want to let the family know that you're in my prayers, and I will continue to pray for you. Also, my condolences for the family of the late Mr. Jerome Parker, who's a member of the Suffolk Redevelopment Housing Authority. He's a great man, he's going to truly be missed, and I'd like to let the family know that I will continue to keep them in prayer also. I attended the South Suffolk, I'm sorry, the Saratoga Philadelphia Civic League last night, actually. And we, I'd like to thank those citizens who came out and participated. We had a very good, productive meeting. Also, I would like to thank Mark Furlough, Director of Park and Recreation, and his staff for replacing some of the playground equipment. The playground over in Saratoga is looking extremely nice. It's, it's, it's a great job, Mark, and I just wanted to thank you and your staff for that. Also, over in the Walnut Hill community, grass and weeds on the corner of Locust Street and Jefferson Street, that's something that we had visited, what, about a month ago, a little bit more? I'd like to get that lot taken care of. I guess the grass is probably about four feet tall at this point. Also, the street is caving in around, just the drain at 116 Shepherd Street, it's a trip hazard, and so if somebody could take a look at that, I would appreciate it. Also, asphalt in front of 111 Shepherd Street is broken up near the curb, and that is also a trip hazard. Over in the South Suffolk Pleasant Hill area, there's potholes on the corner of County Street and Hunter Street. As you turn off County into Hunter, there's some very large potholes over in that area. If you could get staff to take a look at it, it would greatly be appreciated. And with that, I'd like to say good night.
Councilman Fawcett?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, John, I want to know what time you're going to jump on Friday.
11:00.
So, because I'm going to be on the opposite side of the field, and I'm going to watch. And by chance, if I see you come out of the sky, other than with a parachute, I'll come over and see what's going on with you, okay?
I'm going to look for you on the way down the lane with one of your.
You come on by. Anyway, tonight, we heard the proclamation that was given to the Fire Prevention, Fire Prevention Week by the Fire Department, and the topic was cooking. As you heard earlier, if you were here, one of the major issues that create fires within the home is cooking on the stove. A lot of times, people put it on the stove, decide to go take a nap, go outside, see what the kids are doing, whatever, whatever, and before you know it, you've got the kitchen on fire, the place is smoked up. I can tell you firsthand that I would ask you to pay attention to Fire Prevention Week, particularly check your smoke detectors, your carbon monoxide detectors, if you have them. Just don't take it for granted, you know, pull them down, change the batteries, if they're hard-wired, back up with batteries, get that done, because I can assure you that without that smoke detector, your chances of living in a home are going to be very, 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 very less. You're not going to make it if you don't have that smoke detector or carbon monoxide detector. Carbon monoxide, you cannot, you cannot smell it by the time you discover. If you do, and it doesn't put you in a deep sleep, you'll be gone. So this is an important week, but Fire Prevention Week is not just for the week we recommended it for, it's for every day. Every day should be fire prevention in your surroundings. So please, if you would, pay attention to that. If you need something over a smoke detector, call. As you were told earlier, they'll be more than happy to set up a time to come out and install one for you. Believe you me, you will be glad if you have one. You heard tonight, the Suffolk Peanut Fest is on, starting tomorrow, Thursday, running through Sunday. Please come out and enjoy all the festivities and the fun, and hopefully, everybody has a good time. On Friday, the Rotin Club will have the shrimp feast. If you haven't already got tickets, try to get it before Friday, because they will not be selling any tickets at the door, and it starts around 3:00 o'clock and runs until 7:00. So there is some tickets still out there, so if you're interested, go out there. We heard tonight that we have been given the AAA again for our city. You know, I don't think anybody understands how that kind of work, that works, but it takes everybody in this city, every department, everybody that has anything to do with working here, finance, City Managers Group, staffing, all the City Council, and all the physical responsibilities in order to get that AAA back up on for the next year. We have to go through it every year, and that gives us a lot of benefits, having that AAA rating. So I want to thank everybody for that, and, and without it, we would not get it, because it's not automatic. I think the City Managers Office and the Mayor play a pretty good role with finance. They have to sit in front of the agencies, along with some other department heads, to get it there. Ron Williams with Treasure plays a game in that, we thank him also. So I want to congratulate everybody that we got it again this, this year. I want to thanks to the Sheriff's Office again for hosting that event for the seniors. Shelley was out there, of course, John, and Mr. Bennett showed up also. I think he was out there for a little bit. But they, they deserve a lot of thanks and effort for what they did, and the seniors had a blast. I mean, they got a meal, there was all kinds of gifts, information from a lot of vendors out there. That was, that was really a cool event that they put on, that I think a lot of seniors walked away. They had a food giveaway out there in the parking lot afterwards, which was just fantastic. So I want to thank the whole Sheriff's Department for what they do each and every day for our city. I want to send condolences to A.J. Parker. I've had the opportunity to sit with A.J. on Suffolk Redevelopment Housing. I looked forward every time I went to that meeting, because he always came in energized and with just a lot of good ideas, and he was a very positive piece of the, of that group that represented the Suffolk Redevelopment Housing Authority. He'll be truly missed. I know that our mayor had a lot of interactions with A.J. on a day-to-day basis, and I really appreciate what he had done for the Suffolk Redevelopment Housing and other areas of the city, as long as. the city as long as he has been here. So, he'll be truly missed. I'll see you at 11:00 on Friday, when you jump, and I hope you have success with it. And thank you, Mayor, for everything. Goodnight, everybody.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I would like to thank staff for the presentations that we had during work session. Really appreciated the overview on land use and changes to some of our zoning designations, and also really appreciate the update on solar. I feel like we're making progress and still have a ways to go, but happy to see the update and happy to see the detail and looking at it on a much deeper level than what we have at this time. So, thank you again for that presentation. We've talked about the senior event held by the Sheriff's Office, and it was a great event. I was honored to bring welcome on behalf of the city council and the mayor, and this was their first annual senior, I don't even remember the name of it, and I deleted it from my calendar, which is terrible, but anyway, very, the very first event. So, they'll be holding this annually and hoping that they'll be looking for a bigger venue. They had pretty good turnout and a great response, and it was a good event. Lots of information, lots of good free stuff, and I'm in that, you know, senior citizen category, almost, I guess. I don't know what the, what's the, what's the, I don't know what the age limit is, but I'm getting closer and closer. And a little shout out to the deputy sheriff, who is my birthday twin, so he'll know what we're talking about. He was the emcee of the event. But yeah, very, very good event. Hopefully, it will be even better next year. I just, we're all talking about Peanut Fest. I want to remind everybody that Suffolk would not be known for peanuts and Peanut Fest if it wasn't for the farmers that grow the peanuts. Peanuts harvest is in full swing. They're being dug and harvested all around the area, and it's wonderful that we have this huge event to celebrate that this weekend. Hopefully, the weather will behave itself, and it'll be a good event. I highly recommend the live music, you know, the shameless plug for some, lots of good vans, one really good one Friday night, another really good one Saturday afternoon, so. But hopefully, everybody will turn out, remember that we're all about peanuts in Suffolk, and appreciate the fact, again, that we celebrate this really important part of our, our city and our heritage. Related to Peanut Fest, I did attend the Queen's Banquet on Thursday with some of the other council members, and I had not been to that before. It was a very nice event, and congratulations to all the young ladies that represent our local schools. I don't know how they picked, because they were all smart and beautiful, and any one of them would have made an excellent choice, but shout out to all of, all those young ladies for participating, and to the Queen, who will represent us on the weekend. And appreciate being able to be at that event. And with that, I will say goodnight.
Councilman Bennett?
Thank you. I just have a couple of things. First, I'd like to say congratulations to Captain Callis on his retirement. He was telling me he was going to do it, but I didn't know it was going to be that quick. I want to send congratulations to him and his family. And I would say really, with the sheriff expo, senior expo, I think that was something that a lot of seniors I've heard talk about. The gifts that they gave, they wasn't cheap. They had some real expensive gifts, nice gifts that were given out. So, people were very excited about that, and then they had food giveaway after, in the parking lot. So, people lined up in cars going around to get a food giveaway. So, he partnered with, what's the name of that group? Anyway, it's another group that helped the needy. So, they, they was giving food away as well. Ms. Slaughter, that's her name. But anyway, Peanut Fest is this weekend. We look like we're supposed to have good weather, so everybody be safe and have a good weekend.
Councilman Johnson?
I'm going to have to repeat a couple of things, because they messed me up on what I had to say, but AAA bond rating to the citizens of this city, thank you. This is because of the people of the city and the, and the staff that we have here that we have that, and because of the way we run our city. I think we're doing good things, and we thank the citizens and all of the staff that has made that possible. To our Finance Department, who Tealyn operates for, she's the head in NACCO, have done a wonderful job. Every year, she keeps, keep getting it perfect, and we can't thank her enough for that. Fire prevention, of course, we have such a superb fire department, and this cooking stuff, I've made that mistake a couple of times, it's, please be careful in your kitchens and with fire. And then, I had Jack Nerny on the top of my list. John stole my thunder there a little bit, too. Back when I ran for council nine years ago, my first phone call was to Jack Nerny. And for those of you that didn't know him, he was, is a true Virginia gentleman. I mean, the man just, there's no one that could ever say anything bad about Jack Nerny. He was just that kind of a guy. And he was always encouraging and always saying, you can do this, you can do that. Not only did he do it himself, but he just encouraged the world to do the same. And his family, he's raised a wonderful family, and they're all really dear friends and such good Suffolkians. We are very blessed in this city to have such. And with that, I'll just lead right into the First Citizen with Mack and Sandra Birdsong. Again, two people that have given and given and given to this city over the years. They were very, very, it was rewarding to see them receive their reward for First Citizen, because there's so many like it in our city, but if we can just honor them every once in a while, it's good for everybody. It makes us all feel good. The Pilot Club that puts on the Queen's Banquet, thank you, Pilots Club. I've been going to it ever since it was, came about, and they do a tremendous job. And to write on the young ladies that were there, I kept looking at them, how could they be 16, 18 years old? They all looked like they were 27. I mean, they're a beautiful group of women, of young women, that represents our city so well. It was, it's a wonderful event. I wouldn't miss it, and I had a tremendous time there, and it's a real kickoff to the Peanut Fest coming forward. Everybody, keep in mind, this is the harvest time of the year. All I, I was late getting here tonight, because I was behind a peanut, I mean, behind a corn combine on 58. It's, it's, we need to be safe. We want our farmers out there, we want them to be on the road, and we want to stay slow behind them and be very safe, so. But recognize that it's their time of the year. It's not going to be long, but they need a few days to harvest. I will go on with the Suffolk Lions Club. I've been president of the club so many times. They asked me to be the head of this thing we did the other night for the 100th years. We are so blessed in this city to have so many remarkable people that have made our clubs what they are, and to do such wonderful things for the community. It was a great event. I so appreciate council being there, the ones that were there, and even the ones that, what, I know you were there and thought it was, and Commonwealth Attorney, and the treasurer, and all the people that showed up from the city, I appreciate it so much. We are really, really feel blessed. If you ever really want to feel really good about something, too, I, I too went to Lance Callis's retirement, stood in the back, and listened to all of his friends and colleagues talk about him, and it's truly remarkable. It makes you feel wonderful about the city and about the people that work here, because they all love each other. It's pretty amazing. It was a wonderful event. He's a wonderful fellow. I'm sorry we're losing him, but it's okay. He can, he needs to retire, I guess, but it was truly a superb event, and I wish him the very best in his, in his retirement. One other thing, because I almost forgot it, but Thursday evening, 6:00 tomorrow night, Hilton, on Target, they're having the homeless shelter presentation for the new homeless shelter that we'd like to present. So, somehow, we haven't said a whole lot about it, but if you're interested and want a preview of what's going forward, or have comments to make, want to make suggestions, be there tomorrow night at 6:00 at the Hilton Garden Inn. It's important for our city. I think it's, it's a good thing coming forward, and we need, you need to give us your what for, if you'd like to do that. And with that, I'll say thank you and goodnight.
Vice Mayor Ward?
Yes, I'd like to also congratulate the city for AAA. As council, we know how important it is, and even the city know how important it is, but that's great to have, that's how things should be done in the city. Fire Department, we got a good, the Fire Department, that's true. Congratulations for that award. And some of the things, I did attend the chambers with Rec. Counselor, Councilor, the mayor, and Aziz. They always put on a good lunching, and you get good information around the area. I'd also like to thank Mr. Carl Marshall and Mr. Darryl Lewis for coming to the Pewsfield Civic, Town Hall meeting. They gave a whole lot of information, and we had a nice crowd, but the job these two men done was very, very good. When I say that, I mean, they did a good job. They broke it down and made it simple, and most of the people there understood exactly what we was talking about, and they even understand the new traffic, this information. So, it went real, real well. And I'd like to thank Mr. Robert Lewis for putting that together, and I thought it was a great idea to make it happen for the community. And also, Councilor, talking about the opioid situation. That's something we can't hide, that can affect anybody, and it's something that you need to know, get the most information you can, because some, some way it happened is, might start from injury. It's not like somebody just went in, want to get involved in it. So, that's, they gave you a lot of information. I think the board, the panel was excellent, to the point is, they explained what you need to know to answer the questions, and some of the questions we asked, you know, we had to vary, because there was mostly on one topic, but they did a good job, far as I'm concerned, a great job. The Lions Club, and congratulations for the 100-year anniversary. But I hate to just tell the Lions Club, only reason I wanted to go, because we had our Councilman Johnson with the emcee. So, I, so I wanted to go see that happen, and also, he promised us to be out by, I think about 9:00, but he was off like 15 minutes. But that's all right. That was, that was good, it was good entertaining. Like you said, to know what's going on, and it's like the first time I was there, but to know what some organizations do, it's good to get information, to understand what's going on in the city. Also, I give my condolences to A.J. Parker, and I'll let the mayor say more, but A.J. was a type of guy that you can go to, and you had many of them, you can go to, and he going to let you know the real deal. He not going to cut no corners. He going to let you know you're right or wrong, or how you feel. And that's one of the guys that always would have a good conversation, and a lot of things going on, that I'll see what's happening. We agree on it. If not, he'll let me know. And like I said, he, he gave you the good advice, good advice, and he will be missed. And Mr. Doome, like I said, the mayor handled that part. He's a good man, and I tell you, have my condolences. And I also did attend the Queen's Banquet, and like they said, anyone could have won. That was one of the best ones I've seen, far as representing the Peanut Fest, and that was a great one, and I like that. But I wanted to share something. Thank you, Councilor, about that car I was in. It was a funny story, because the young man, Mr. John Riddick, called me and said he wanted to ride me in a peanut parade. And I was saying, I, okay, I, oh, yeah. But he said something that I didn't know. He said a sling. Now, I didn't know what a sling was. I didn't know what that was. I thought it was like the police car, that he's riding, got a little round thing in the back. I said, yeah, man, I, I'll see. But I didn't tell him, yeah. I didn't tell him I was definitely coming. So, Saturday morning, when I came up, it started raining, a little drizzle, so I drove my car, just in case. But he called me, and by the time I got to Hardees, I, I saw what he was talking about. Oh, yeah, I ride in that. And he called that the Slinger Shot. It's four seats, and it looked good, and he said, he wanted, you know, to honor me and let me ride in it, and he did. And we got up front, so, so, and Councilor was right. I mean, we had like three or four children, kids who wanted to ride with us. It was something, taking pictures, it made me feel like I was a celebrity. That was really nice. I enjoyed it. I think I won one for the state that day. Anyway, that was good, and I thank him. But one thing about Mr. Riddick is, he loved Suffolk. The his conversation and ideas, that would even encourage me, and that's why I asked, why don't you come back and do some of the things you're saying? His family got a history of, in Suffolk, so I hope that he'd take advantage of that and come here, come to Suffolk and bring some of his good ideas to Suffolk. And his group is named Virginia Sling, so be aware, they, they, they coming, they coming, especially Mr. Riddick. So, what did I say? God bless.
Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and wrap it up, try to be brief. I want to start off by offering my condolences to the family of Jack Nerny. And what can I say? Like I say, I always take objection, but I always take exception to the word honorable placed in front of somebody's name, because they win an election. I think honorable is something needed to earn, and he was an honorable man who gave of himself freely and immeasurably to our city. I didn't know him as well as some of you folks, but obviously, I can see the impact that he had on, on a lot of people. So, my condolences go out to his family. Congratulations to Captain Lance Callis. I'm sorry I didn't make it to your little retirement celebration yesterday, but we were kind of hung up over in Norfolk, had already signed up for that gig about, oh, a month or so ago. But I met Lance when he was, I believe, a sergeant in the Canine Department. So, he was in the Canine Department, so that automatically, we had, we had something to talk about, just a great guy, great attitude, and I'm sure he was a great leader as well. Suffolk First Citizen, I already mentioned, Mack and Sandra Birdsong, most deserved. Nobody mentioned the Public Safety Committee met on 9/27. We had a rather robust two-hour meeting, once again, talking about the main topic and the, in my opinion, the main objective and mission of the Public Safety Committee, and that is communication, communication and community engagement. How can we engage our citizens? How can we get information from them as to what they feel will benefit them the most to advance safety in their neighborhoods? And once again, tied in the National Night Out and some other initiatives, how can we promote communication between our citizens and our public safety personnel? And I think it's going really well. The impetus, if you will, will be on the create, in creating this portal that our citizens will be able to access. We're trying to make it convenient, simple. Pick a topic, if it's crime-related, if it's code enforcement-related, or you just want to provide some information, and give us some advice. And it'll be immediate, it will be responded to in a very efficient manner, and I believe we will be able to make some serious progress in enhancing our safety initiatives throughout the city. So, we're continuing to work on, so stay tuned. It's coming, and it won't be long, but we want to get it right when we put it out there, and even after we put it out there, we'll continue to tweak it, once we find out what works and what doesn't work. And we will be open for all the suggestions that our citizens can provide, because it's, it's your tool, it's your means of communication, and other means of communication with city personnel. Queen's Banquet at the Hilton Garden, an exceptional group. I've been to quite a few of those myself, emceed a few of them, just nine very nice young ladies. The Queen was Destiny Caravella. I read her entire essay that she wrote, and I'm not going to read the whole thing, because it's about a page and a half, but I'm going to read two sentences, because I think it kind of says it all, about Peanut Fest and who we are, and it says, "To me, the Suffolk Peanut Fest is not just about the food, performances, rides, and vendors, but about bringing our community together. The Suffolk Peanut Fest celebrates the diversity of our city." I mean, I don't think she could be more on point, because I've always said, what makes our city great is our, is our citizens and our diversity, without a shadow of a doubt. Suffolk Lions Club, 100th anniversary, congratulations. I did not make it to Mutch Strut, first one I've missed in about 25 years or so, but we had the parade in the morning, and we had the Lions Club in the evening, so I wasn't there to set it up, and I wasn't going to be there to shut it down. But I understand it was a very well-attended event, and, sorry, I didn't make it. State of the region. Councilman Rector, thank you for your report, but you mentioned that the Hampton Roads region had not done a few things, but Suffolk in particular did some really good things, and we had some serious numbers that stood out above our other Hampton Roads cities, if you will. So, we've, we've got a lot to be proud about, proud of, and a very, very bright future. Shrimp Feast is Friday, not Thursday. It's been Thursday. Shrimp Feast is Friday, not Thursday, it's been Thursday forever. We did Friday last year because of COVID, and now it turns out Friday's good. We still have some tickets left. I ran out to dealership yesterday, and they brought me 90 last night, and we've probably sold 20 or 30 of those, so they will not be sold at the gate. Looks like the weather's good, and you can't beat it for 40 bucks. I mean, food, beverages, and entertainment for 40 bucks. What a deal. Jumping out of airplanes, I was thinking about going out there, but, you know. I will let you know that at the age of 20, I was offered the opportunity to go to Fort Bragg and go through airborne school and jump out of a perfectly good airplane, and I decided I probably didn't need to do that, and I hope I'm smarter now than I was then, so I'm not going to go backwards, but I wish you, I wish you luck. Of course, they don't strap you to anybody, then they just kind of chunk you out and you figure it out yourself. What else I got? Okay, I got to save this for last, and I'll try to get through the best I can, but I do want to mention the passing of my coworker, good friend, confident, confidant, over 25 years, Mr. A.J. Parker. He was one of a kind. I don't know if some of y'all had met him, but sop and wet, he was probably about 98 pounds, you know, a very small man in stature, but with a gargantuan character. I mean, just an unbelievable character. And we had the type of relationship where we could talk about anything, absolutely anything. And sitting up on his diaposts lots of times, I mean, we live in our own little world, so sometimes we need folks that can talk to us about other environments and do it honestly. And that's how A.J. was. He said what he was on his mind, he said what he meant, he meant what he said, he didn't pull any punches. He grew up in the central part of our city, graduated from JFK in '72, went in the army, spent a little over 20 years in the army, and was honorably discharged as a master sergeant E8, which is pretty good. He had a lot of stripes on that little arm that kind of ran all the way down to his elbow, but he was very, very proud of his military service, and used to talk about it as to how it shaped who he was, because he'd only seen one thing growing up in downtown Suffolk. And when he got in the army, he got out into the real world. Well, I'm going to say real world. He got, he got to see a different part of the world in different places, and he took responsibility seriously. And I think that's part of what we're losing right now, is the two Rs, responsibility and respect. Very folks want to take, very few individuals want to take responsibility for their actions, and then if you're a leader, you have to take responsibility for the individuals that you lead. That's how it works, that's what they teach you. When you're the commander, you are responsible for everything your men do and everything that they don't do. And too many times, individuals nowadays don't take responsibility for their own actions. It's always somebody else's fault, or there's an excuse as to why it didn't happen. And then there's respect. It seems like we've lost the respect for a lot of things. We've lost respect for our elders, we've lost respect for our country, we've lost respect for our teachers, we've lost respect for our law enforcement officers. And I think if you have no respect for other people, you'll never have any respect for yourself. And I think that's part of the issue. So to look at A.J. and deal with him every day, and he's been fighting COPD for nine Anyhow, it's just tough. So with that, my condolences to Deborah and the family. I know everyone that knew him will miss him, I know I'll miss him. And I do have some other good news. Okay, good news, not the best good news, I've got some good news that the manager handed me. It go along with our AAA rating and our finance awards, we have three projects that the bids went out this month, two went out this month and another one will go out in November, which basically means these projects, they're already funded, we get the bids back, and we go to work.
Then we advertise them.
We advertise them, then they come back. Well, we get advertising, we get the bids back, and then we can go to work. Already advertised. Downtown Festival Park, bids are due this month. Route 17, Shoulders Hill intersection, which is long past due, bids are due in later on this month, and a lot of it not to our fault. I don't want folks to think that we've been dragging our feet on that project. A lot of it had to do with infrastructure and third parties and moving, God knows, I don't know what was buried, I can get Robert out here to tell you everything, it was buried on that intersection to get it moved. And then also, most notably, our downtown central library. So you're really going to see some significant progress going on in our city right now. We got a lot of good things going on. We're moving dirt over Nansman Parkway and Willroy Road, so we get over the railroad track. We've got these projects going on. I could, I don't know where Gary is, he's not here, and like, I could get him up here and talk about a whole lot more, but, you know, we do have a lot going on, and it's a lot of good stuff. Hopefully, everybody will get out to Peanut Fest and enjoy that. The weather's going to be good. Shrimp Fest, Thursday, Friday, get your tickets. And from there, I'll go to my quote of the night, and it just happens that it has something to do with friends, it's from a gentleman by the name of Frank Crane, and that quote is, "A friend is someone with whom you dare to be yourself." And with that, I will ask for a motion for adjournment. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve.
Got a motion for adjournment, Councilman Fawcett, Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Butler Barlow, as I already discussed in the motion. Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This meeting stands adjourned.